All right, this is the committee of the whole. This is Thursday, April 20th, 2017. We're at 6:00 PM. I have Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor DeCrespigny. Counselor Hill.
Yeah.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Present.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Bullock.
Here.
Counsel Sonny.
Here.
Counsel Siminelli.
Not even if it's present, we do have a call.
Please stand this slide.
All right. This is the resolution of my Counsel Leo McKinnon to invite Lynn Bosson Harbor to this meeting to give an update on the project.
Mr. Chairman, could I have the motion have the representatives from Lynn Bosson Harbor come before us?
Motion made and seconded to have the people from Lynn Bosson Harbor come before us. All those who favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. You have done so. Gentlemen, please, if you could, just state your name and title for the record.
Push this. Is it on?
Green. Green is live.
Hi, how you all doing, councilors? Thank you very much for having me today. I'm John Taco, Director of Community Relations for Lynn Bosson Harbor. I'm here today with my colleague Greg John. He's our Executive Director of Brand Marketing. He's also in charge of our public relations and branding initiatives within the company. And also, thank you to all those in the audience today and watching from home. We really appreciate the support of the community. You guys have been tremendous. Council, you've been tremendous as well to work with through the last. It's amazing to me, I've been at this for now five years. So, it's sort of an unbelievable process that we have going. We're really looking forward to June 2019. I'll give you all a quick update and then open it up to Q and A, if that's okay.
Sure.
This is just, again, a reminder rendering of the project. So, as you can see onsite, and a lot of you drive back and forth on Lower Broadway, you started seeing a lot of the cranes go up. To put it into perspective, the two tall cranes that you see out there now, those are at half height. So, when the building's fully erected, those cranes will be twice as high. They're at 200 feet tall now, they'll be at 400 feet tall at the end of the project. So, more to come. Stay tuned. A little bit on the construction jobs. We're very happy to report, we have 57 Everett workers on the project now. They've worked a total of 22, over 22,000 hours on the site. That's about 5% of the labor hours that's been worked on the project for a total of almost 1.4 million in salaries benefits paid to the people of Everett. I know, you know, some people think that the 5% sounds low, but to put it into perspective, Everett, as you compare it to the rest of the city, or the state of Massachusetts, Everett is about 0.6% of the population of Massachusetts. So, I think here is a great demonstration of Everett preference working. We've been working diligently, extremely hard to get folks from Everett working on the project. I think you can see that reflective in the numbers, both in Everett, but also in the local community. In the local communities, which includes our host surrounding neighboring communities, plus the city of Revere, where at 28% of our workforce is from the area. So, we're very, very proud of that number. Just for anyone out there that's interested in signing up for a construction job, you can go to our website, www.winnbostonharbor.com. Click on Careers and Vendors, Construction Jobs. It will take you to a site that's managed by Suffolk Construction. You can fill out the form. There's two areas to apply to, if you're in the building trades and if you're not in the building trades. If you're in the building trades, that's great because our project is subject to a project labor agreement. It's 100% union-built, so we'll be connecting you with a lot of the subcontractors onsite as things get ramping up. We've been maintaining a list of Everett and other local, it's around the community residents that we asked our subcontractors to draw down on as things get moving. Regarding full-time careers, once we get opening, we'll have over 4,500 positions. As you noticed, the number has gone up. For a long time, we were saying 4,000. That's a reflection of the careful thought that Mr. Lynn gave on the program and the makeup of the resort. You may have read in the newspaper that we scaled back some of the retail and we've added more food and beverage facilities. And what you see there is a reflection in the additional food and beverage options. There's more people that work in food and beverage, so I think the added benefit to the community, in addition to more places to go and enjoy, is that more people will be working. I know it may be tough to see, but I'd be happy to hand this slide out later. We have over 700 job titles. This breaks it down into areas of the resort. You know, gaming, gaming jobs will have over 1,600 jobs, total non-gaming jobs, almost 1,600 jobs in facilities. So, anything to electrical, mechanical, things like that, almost 260 jobs in other administration, people like myself, lawyers, accountants, other managers, there'll be about 183 of those positions. If you are interested in signing up and staying informed for these opportunities, also, please go to www.winnbostonharbor.com. Click on the Careers tab, click on Join Us, and it will take you to the Win Talent Network. What you're seeing on here on the slides is a screenshot of the Win Talent Network. You can fill out your information. You have the opportunity to put your resume in and select specific areas of interest if you would like. You could leave it blank. You could select all areas, which I suggest doing, especially at this early stage. And then, you'll have e-alert. And for all the councilors, please sign up yourselves, because that way, you'll get e-alerts as soon as these positions are posted. And if you know people in the community, some of your constituents, some of your neighbors that are interested in these positions, that you know have the talents to help us out, please, please direct them this way. Please share this information. You'll get regular alerts. And it'll be a steady stream of employment. This year, we will probably hire another 40 people, probably 100 people next year, but we got to hire 4,500 people. So, it's going to come fast. So, it'll be dribs and drabs here and there. Some of the more technical positions, we get a lot of, we have several IT positions open right now. We have an electrical position, a mechanical position open at the moment. There'll be more types of positions like that opening up as we go, then more management type of roles within the casino itself and the resort itself, and then the full depth and breadth of all the job opportunities open up in 2018. Local business and construction, again, here's another area of preference for Everett and local businesses. In Everett alone, we're very pleased to announce, this is just on the construction, we've awarded over $28 million in contracts to local companies. You can see a list, a sampling of the companies that have been awarded work by us down below. We're very proud of this number. This does not include the numerous restaurants and retail locations that we use around town, floral shops, things like that. There's a lot of other business and a lot of examples of our people and our teammates going out of the office for lunch and dining in establishments all over the city. But, I think this is a wonderful demonstration of our commitment to hiring local and to using local goods and vendors and services. What this does not include, which we haven't started looking at yet, is our operational opportunities. So, we'll get a procurement person onboard, probably in the next year or so. They'll start to look at, what are some of the things that we need to open the facility? Toiletries, toilet paper, food, beverages, things like that. So, all those sort of opportunities will come down the pipe. This is strictly right now, construction. We're working on FFNE, which is Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. We had a big event, attracted a lot of local interest at Anthony's in Malden a couple months ago. I think you'll see some more awards coming out of that, but we're very excited about this opportunity. I just want to give you all a brief update on construction. Again, we have a monthly meeting with representatives from the two wards adjacent to our project and also the council president. They come every month. I'd ask you, if you have any questions, please call them. Call me at any time, obviously, and you're more than welcome at any time to give me a ring. We could set up a tour of the facility. It's a pretty fascinating site and I'd be happy to take you over there. What you see here is not two excavators kissing each other. This is actually the last bucket of soil. 850,000 tons of soil has been removed off-site. That's 4,650 railcars, 5,666 trucks. To put that in perspective, each railcar is the equivalent of four trucks. So, that's a lot of dirt that's moved off-site. 14,000 tons of asbestos soil was removed, as well as a lot of other contaminated soil. We've moved this soil all over the, all over the country and all over the northern United, or North America. We moved some to Canada, Georgia, Ohio, New Hampshire, you name it. We had trucks moving all over the place. Here's an overhead shot, some of the water, the water work has begun. What you see here is the outline of the harbor walk in the living shoreline. So, the concrete piers at the northeast of the picture here, that's actually going to be an elevated harbor walk that, that will step down to our docking facilities where you can meet up to our water shuttles and private vessels can touch and go and drop off passengers and pick up. So, that will happen there. What you see on the southern portion of the picture, sheeting has been installed. The actual, the wall, the retaining wall that was installed there by the old Monsanto Chemical Company had deteriorated over the years. So, it, actually, a lot of land had fallen back into the water. So, we were able to reclaim some of this acreage and we'll fill this back in with clean fill. This will become more harbor walk, more parks, more recreation for people to enjoy. Work on the living shoreline will begin, excavation and removal will begin in a couple weeks, and then you'll start seeing some native plantings. You may not see this physically because it's out on the river. It's tough to get back there at the moment, but sometime this summer. You're going to start seeing in some of these pictures, the footprint of the building is now becoming visible. So, if you're landing in your, landing in your airplane and you look down and you see the target sign, you can start seeing the Wind Resort going up. Here's an overhead shot. So, you see, you see the outline of the parking garage, and I'll have some zoomed-in pictures as we move ahead. On the peninsula, you'll see some work, the pile driving's going in, and that's our new convention and ballroom and meeting space is being installed. The structure that you actually see up is the central utility plant. So, the steel that you see at the back of the building, that's, that is back of the house for employees. That's also our power plant, our generators, all the utilities, because we need to get the building functional, operational, so that we can make it weatherproof and we can condition the air, so we can start installing all the high-end finishes. So, we'll be running this building well before we're ready to open. So, this was the, one of the first things that needed to get accomplished. Here's just a schematic of the garage. This is what's actually done. So, we're done with the bottom floor. There's a four-floor, almost 3,000 space below-grade parking garage. So, the basement level's completely done. As you see, the dark green, that's the third level is starting, sort of kind of goes from the northeast corner down to the, sort of the, sorry, the northwest corner to the southeast tip, at least on this map. We're up to B3 in the dark green, B2, and we're actually on the first floor of the garage on that dark blue area. Here's again, a photo of the garage. So, as you can see, on the left-hand side of this photo, you're down to the B4 level of the garage, and you can start seeing some of the levels build on each other. What you see, there's a, there's a concrete form going up in the middle, that is actually the, the building core. So, that's the elevator core that will go up the tower. So, you started to see some of the tower form and peek its head out of the ground. As, what you'll see by June 2017, believe it or not, it's right around the corner, the central utility plant, the steel that you see at the back of the site will be completely weather-tight. So, we'll actually have the facade on, what the side of the building will look like, will be done this June. The garage will be done to the, completely to the B2, B1 level, and the hotel structure will be complete to the third floor. So, you'll start seeing that. Now, once that happens, you're going to start seeing this building going up a floor a week. So, the next year of this construction project will be the most dramatic changes to the, to the horizon. As I was saying before, the foundation is also going on for the peninsula. Local roadway improvements, as you know, part of our mitigation and commitments of the community, our improvements to Wellington Circle, Centilli Circle, Sweets' Circle, Broadway, the Robin and Dexter Truck Route, Sullivan Square, other improvements along Route 16. So, it's an extensive network of improved roadway work that needs to be done. Here's a timeline, a very simplified timeline of what needs to happen. So, what you'll see is this summer, July, August, roadway work will begin and it should wrap up by the end of 2018. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions? Is there any question? Councilman Hamlin.
Mr. Chairman, through you. Could we, could you tell me a little bit more about the, the building that's up that you said is going to be your utility building and the people? The question was that, are you going to supply all of your own electricity for the entire site, for the tire? I'm getting confused with that.
Yeah, no, thank you. Well, a couple things. We'll have emerged, emergency generators onsite, so that in the event that we lose power, we'll be able to keep the building operational. So, you'll have, we'll have diesel generators onsite. We'll also have a cogeneration facility onsite, so we'll be able to generate some of our own power. Part of our LEED certification, we will be LEED Gold certified, so we will be operating and generating power onsite. We're nowhere near 100% of our power will be generated onsite. We'll be buying it from the open market, but we will have a small plant onsite. We will have a full facilities and engineering team to take care of our HVAC, controls, electrical, carpentry, the whole nine yards. So, a lot of that happens in that area. Our back of the house, our dining hall will be there. Our employee bus drop-off is back there. So, there's a little cutout, and when you come on a tour, I'd be happy to show you, there's a little cutout under the building where employees can get right in. Our employee dining facility will be back there. So, there's a lot happening back there, but it won't be too visible to, to our guests once we open.
All set, councilor? Councilwoman Sonny.
You mentioned the roadways. Is that through the state that you're working with on the rotaries in Lower Broadway?
A number of agencies. So, we work with, we work with the state. We work with each municipality separately in their jurisdiction, so Wellington and Medford, Everett and Broadway, Centilli, Sweets' with Boston on Sullivan Square. So, there's a number, a number of pieces that need to be coordinated, but all those are going very well. So, again, we should be in the ground sometime this summer.
So, will we be able to see what's going on, what they're going to be doing in those areas? Because I know we had a problem with the rotaries of both Sweets' and the other end and, you know, where they talked about different designs in the past, like overpass from, you know, from Everett into Medford and, you know, also where Broadway starts coming, they wanted, they were talking about one lane versus two. I mean, you know, we want to make sure, when you're spending this kind of money, that we benefit from it, not go backwards.
Sure. I absolutely, I'd be happy to walk you through those plans. They've been included in all of our environmental finds, they haven't changed. In our last public meeting down at the Conley Center, we kind of walked through each one in a little bit more detail. But, you know, it may be time that we get a meeting together again at the Conley Center to just go through the specifics. What are the changes? What you're going to see? What people should expect? It's going to be a year of construction and it's going to be tough. So, the good news is, up till now, we've moved a lot of dirt, we've had a lot of trucks. Each concrete pour is 450 trucks with relatively little disruption. We've had minimal complaints, minimal noise, minimal dust, minimal traffic impact. That will change. We're going to do our best to mitigate those impacts, and we're also going to do our best to communicate it. So, in addition to the, the public meeting that we'll have to kick this off and again, remind people the specifics, we'll, we'll also have a link from our website and from winforall.com, where you'll be able to get regular updates, weekly updates on what will be happening. We'll also have Facebook and Twitter for people to follow, and we'll start marketing those opportunities before work begins, so that you'll know, your constituents will know what lanes may be closed, what, what to go, if there's a different route that they may want to take. We'll also be informing Google Maps, Waze, and, and some of the online applications to help people navigate through the mess. So, I apologize in advance. We're going to do our best to minimize the impacts. It's going to get worse, but it's going to get much better.
One more question. You talked about jobs. You mentioned administrative work, also like accounting and financing. Is that going to be at that location or is it somewhere else?
Yeah, great question. Absolutely. All of our jobs will be onsite at this point. At the end, maybe a couple will be offsite, that hasn't been determined. But, right now, everything is onsite. The way the hotel functions, it's also an office building, so in that back of the house area, there's a bunch of employee workstations. In parts of the tower tucked away in different areas, there's a bunch of employee workstations. So, we'll all be there. Employees will not be parking onsite as a way to help mitigate the traffic, so we'll be parking employees at Wellington Station Garage and Malden Station and running shuttles back and forth to help minimize traffic impacts on Lower Broadway.
Okay. You talked about, we talked about certain jobs, like for food and beverage with a lot of Everett employees. Are we also going to be looking for administrative work with finance, accounting and?
Absolutely.
In Everett also?
Absolutely. You know, this, this company and this project is extremely interesting. When I had my orientation, and Greg was here when he had his orientation, I was at the table with four scuba divers, and I turned it over and I go, "Four scuba divers? Did anyone remind you that we're in the desert? Like, why are we hiring you?" I'm like, "Oh, we're doing the water acrobatics show. We do the rev, the water shows." That, that was amazing. Greg, in his orientation, had a pilot and a flight attendant. He goes, "Hey, we're a casino resort company. What are you guys doing here?" I was like, "Oh, we're going to work at the Wind Airline, because we have our own private jets." So, literally, when, when you can think of any position, we're likely to have it. We have marine biologists just to take care of the seafood tanks. We're going to have horticulturalists just to take care of the flowers in the building. We'll have landscapers outside. We'll have anything that a big bank has, accounting, finance, administration, that whole thing. We'll have anything that a bank, a teller has, because we have a whole cage and a big cash management situation. We'll have anything that a full-scale, high-tech company will have. We have 3,500 slots, which are basically computer terminals. So, you think about the slot techs that, that need to be hired to maintain all those terminals. We'll have dealers. We'll have anything that a hotel has. We'll have chambermaids. We'll have hotel management staff. We'll have chauffeurs. We'll have concierge, the whole nine yards. So, I think you'd be hard-pressed to find positions that won't be available. Again, sign up online. If anyone is interested in taking a look at what we have in Vegas, I think it's fairly reflective of the type of positions we'll have out here. Go online, it connects to their jobs, you know, jobs as well. Go through and take a look. Come through the positions, see what's there. Get yourself ready, but it's going to be very exciting.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Councilwoman McGlaughlin.
Chairman, through you to Mr. Taco. Mr. Taco, can you talk a little bit about what we're going to be seeing on the GE site in Ward 6? It's a really active site. We have a lot of great plans that are going to happen for that area down there. And just to bring my colleagues up to sort of power to where we are on that site, some of the stuff that we talk about on a monthly basis, as you said, you guys have been tremendous meeting with us on a regular basis for the past two years almost. But, if you could just briefly touch on the GE site and what we'll see, because I think it's right around the corner on construction-wise.
Sure. And that's a pretty spectacular project in its own right, and I apologize for not having some visuals to demonstrate what we're doing there. But, you know, we have, it's no secret, we've been working with the city to relocate the park that's adjacent to the scrap metal yard and the power plant on Lower Broadway. That's about a three-and-a-half acre site. We want to relocate that to the GE site in connection with the seven-acre park, and we've been working closely with the city to design new park and recreation facilities over there. So, part of the designs is a fully turf soccer field, track, football field. There's, there's a stadium seating over the track and turf. I understand that your high school team do not have the, the proper track facilities onsite, so this is designed to be a fully regulation track facility where you could have a full meet, competitive meet. We'll have a dog park. We'll have a number of different playstations for different age children. We'll have a splash pad that's been designed there for some of the summer activities. A recreation center is in process of being designed, working closely with the city, so that's someplace, a locker room, bath facilities, vending shops, a community center may end up being part of it, where you could host some neighborhood-type meetings or maybe some other meetings. Gives you another option in, in addition to the Conley Center. So, I think what you'll see out of there, and I implore you to go talk to the mayor and talk to some of the folks in the planning department, Tony Souza and his team, on what is, what are the specifics and what's being designed. But, in addition to that, we'll have a harbor walk that will ring around that site, which is adjacent to the Malden River. So, you'll be able to get off the bike path, which, where we'll be down there this Saturday to clean up for Earth Day. Probably, a lot of you guys will be down there as well, so we look forward to seeing you. But, we'll be connecting to that bike path on both ends, so you'll be able to do a nice recreational run, jog, walk type of loop. It will also connect eventually, if the city's able to, to secure the right-of-way with the MBTA, back to our facility underneath Sweets' Circle. So, pretty exciting stuff that's going on there. It would be, it's, it's better with some visuals, so I could actually point out the different bike and pedestrian routing, but it's good stuff. Some of the parcels, one parcel in particular has been, has been sold to Boston Freightliner, so there'll be a, the new Boston Freightliner facility, which is owned by Mercedes, will be opening up there. And the one along the Lower Broadway will be closing. They have two or three different parcels on Lower Broadway that will be consolidating to a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility at the GE site. Again, that's on sort of the southern portion of the site. The other parcels are available for redevelopment. It's not something that we intend to redevelop, so if there's any interested buyers out there, please come our way. We'd love to do something spectacular for the city of Everett. So, you know, I think it's a pretty exciting project on its own right. I think it's going to give a great new addition and open up some new waterways and bicycle and pedestrian options for the city.
But, John, we'll see that work started pretty soon, correct? That's right around the corner.
Yeah, so.
That's what I just wanted to kind of get out to my colleagues, was that's going to happen now, not later.
Yeah, it's going to happen. The, the work will get started on the southern half of the site fairly soon, probably, I don't know a definitive date, but sometime in the next two months. So, you'll see work on the Boston Freightliner site. There'll be a, a River Green Drive will be cut in, which is the road that comes off of Air Force Road over to the water and cuts in the middle of the site. So, that will open up. The southern portion of the bike path will open. We're still underway with planning and working out with the city on the specifics of the park, so that's not in the immediate future. That will go through its own design and construction process. So, but that will, yeah, we want to start that as soon as possible as well.
And one question that I've got a lot from residents in that neighborhood, I'm sure my colleagues have as well. And one question that I've got a lot from residents in that neighborhood, I'm sure my colleagues have as well, is the soil that you, that has been placed on the site. Is all clean, clean soil, not as contaminated and being utilized as fill, correct, for that site?
Yeah, absolutely.
The purpose is, it's good usable soil that you won't have to grow it and repurchase.
Absolutely, it's a great question. You know, we've actually covered the soils to keep some of the dust down in the neighborhoods. We've been staging very clean, it's all been tested soils to start. We have the, one of the conditions of the AUL is we have to put a cap on it and raise the grade. So, this soil will be spread across the site, clean fill. They'll be used to raise the elevation and provide the pad necessary to create the recreational options.
So, the soil that's being utilized for that purpose, right?
Absolutely, we have a number of environmental consultants on both sides with our project but also at the River Green site that are testing these things regularly and making sure all the soils are appropriate for recreational use.
Great, thank you, John, I couldn't be happier to be working with you and look forward to what's to come in that area. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilman Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you two, I invite you guys. John, I'd like to echo the sentiments and thank the Wynn Group for always having timely meetings and updating us and everything that's going along. If you could, just for the benefit of the audience and individuals in this room, if you could touch a little bit more on traffic improvements. Up to this point in time, it really has been, you know, it hasn't impacted anything, but it's, it's going to start with traffic. So, if you could touch when traffic improvement's gonna start, specifically Lower Broadway area as opposed to other communities, duration, hours of operation, and then what steps Wynn might be taking in order to try to minimize the impact of traffic 'cause, as you know, traffic's a huge issue for all of us, so.
Sure.
Anything you can do to address that, I think would be helpful.
Absolutely, so regarding construction alone, a lot of it's about staging. So, the way you've been able to, to date to minimize some of the traffic impact is stage how, when and where our, our cement and concrete and soil trucks are coming and going. So, that will continue. We'll also be making the site entrance and exit better. So, we'll be building the actual site entrance which is, which is much different than the current Horizon Way entrance. So, those will all be big improvements. The roadway work on Broadway will be extensive widening. What you'll end up seeing is two through lanes on both sides, so that won't change. You'll see a very beautiful landscape buffer which also serves two purposes. One, it's a beautiful thing to look at, it separates the traffic a little bit better. Also, it, it will, it will limit the number of left-hand turns you can take from both sides of the road. So, be able to take a left-hand turn into the site, you'll be able to take a left-hand turn into the Bat Yard if you're coming north. And I, I'm sorry, I wish I had the maps and this is why it'll be a little bit better to go specifically through these improvements in a future meeting. But you'll be able to take a couple left-hand turns going southbound into the neighborhoods of, of the Lower Broadway area. So, that will limit the number less. As any, you know, you experiences driving up and down that road, you can be stuck for minutes at a time behind somebody that's trying to take a left-hand turn down the site. The other thing that it does is in widening the road and creating the landscape buffer, it also, in the areas where you're taking the left-hand turn, allows you to create protected and dedicated left-hand turn lanes. So, cars will be able to exit the throughway and get into a protected lane with a signalized intersection, have a left-hand turn arrow and take a protected left-hand turn that's controlled into the area that it's going. So, that, that's something that you're gonna see. Also, I don't know how many of you have driven down Dexter and Robin Street, but we are turning that into a very legitimate truck route. So, we'll be changing some of the radius of the turns so that they're more accommodating to the larger vehicles that will be traversing from the fruit market and some of the industrial areas in Everett and Chelsea and, and going over to 93. And we'll also be doing full-depth reconstruction there. So, the, the road has deteriorated significantly even in the time that, the five years that I've been around. So, that will be full-depth reconstruction that's capable of handling heavy vehicles and will be able to accommodate that type of traffic. Again, all the signals will be upgraded to the latest technology. We've also worked with BTD, the City of Everett, and us and Boston Transportation Department have been working in collaboration to, believe it or not, Sullivan Square is not connected to the Command Center, the Boston Transportation Command Center, which is a pretty neat technology. If you see, it's one of those like Star Wars-type screens and facilities and everything where they can see what's going on at every intersection in the city. They're getting up-to-the-minute readings on traffic, signal timing, phasing, everything. They can manually turn things on and off, they can re-phase lights right from the Command Center to accommodate different events, different activities. Sullivan Square does not have that, that ends at the Austin Street Bridge. So, part of our mitigation in Sullivan Square is to replace and upgrade all the signalization in Sullivan Square. There'll be some new signals that are added as well. We'll bring that conduit up and connect all of those signals. We'll also be bringing that conduit across the river and up Broadway. So, BTD will be able to seamlessly connect all of the signals along Lower Broadway, along Sullivan Square with the rest of the city so that if garden events and our things and all this stuff is happening at the same time, these things are fluid, they're changeable, people can keep moving. I, I think a lot of the things, in my opinion, that you see down there and some of the negative impacts is the lights, the light phasing's way off on Lower Broadway. So, you can have wide-open road in front of you and you're sitting there going, "Why am I sitting here at a red light and everyone's backed up into the circle?" All that will get corrected, all that will be timed appropriately. The signal phasing will change. So, a lot of this is technical traffic stuff which is way over my head, but, you know, as some of the other roads, side roads are given more priority than maybe they should. You know, they have a longer green phase than, you know, one car comes out and it sits green and you're sitting there going, you know, "Where is everybody?" So, a lot of these things have been studied, they'll be fixed as we move forward. So, it's gonna create, I think, a, a great opportunity to get people moving along Lower Broadway, through Sullivan Square and through Sweets Circle as well.
Okay, and what kind of timeframe are you looking at, duration from start to finish?
Sure, as you can see, I, I put back the timeline up on the screen here. The, we're still in final design, we'll, we'll bid the project out in, in July and we hope to be, start construction in August. This is on Broadway, in the Broadway Truck Route. And as you can see, that takes us, construction will take us through the end of 2018.
And what are the hours of operations, it'll be full day, evenings, what are we looking at?
Roadway, I'm not sure, I think a lot of that still needs to be worked out. As you know, the, the site, we've been operating 24 hours a day, different phasing. You know, the overnight shift is not tremendously well-populated, so the day shifts are, are much heavier populated with workers. But we do some cleanup and preparation overnight. So, I, I think a lot of the specific details on the roadway work, times of construction, things like that, still need to be worked out with the cities.
All right, thank you very much, I have no other questions.
Councilman LaPala.
Thank you, first of all, thank you for coming up to give us an update on this. You know, we get a lot of questions from our constituents and not everybody is, is aware of just how much progress has gone. I've been watching the progress on the site for over a year just by going to the Gateway Mall, going behind Home Depot and Costco. You had a great view of what's going on there and it's amazing the amount of work and, and activity that's going on in that site that you can't see from 99. So, I compliment you for that, it's, it's moving along great. I'm getting a lot of questions from people, there are different rumors out there regarding whether or not there's gonna be commuter rail access as a station. And there's also a discussion, I've heard this in several, from several people that I work with from either Somerville or Malden, Medford rather, that there's gonna be a cross bridge or something going over from the Orange Line, either from Sullivan or from Assembly Row. Can you shed any light on that?
Sure, yes, the, we, we are very hopeful that there would be a pedestrian crossing at the end of our site. It's something we'd love to see. It would give direct access to the Assembly Row, Orange Line Station for any pedestrians and employees that would like to walk across the river and come visit the resort and then vice versa. Head from our resort over and enjoy a lot of the shops, dining and entertainment options over in Somerville as well. It gives, it would provide safe pedestrian and bicycle access. It's not a vehicular crossing, so this is strictly for people looking to walk and bike across the river. We're, we're very excited about that possibility. Part of our mitigation commitments was to find a $250,000 study of what that bridge could look like and some of the engineering challenges that would be faced to hopefully then down the road, put together a bid package. So, that, DCR has been working with us along with the City of Everett and City of Somerville, it's actually a DCR study. So, they've interviewed a number of consultants that have bid on the design work. They've seen some preliminary concepts which look pretty spectacular and I think they should be making a selection soon on that study. So, once that gets underway, hopefully a few months to put that together. I'm not sure what the end product looks like, I'm not sure what the timing looks like or if there's funding available to make it work, but I, I think all parties that have been working on the project are, are excited at the opportunity. And some of the other questions were, I'm sorry.
It was regarding a commuter rail, potential commuter rail station.
Absolutely, so, you know, we've been working very closely with Mass DOT and a number of different possibilities. One of the earliest ideas that the mayor brought to our attention was a commuter line stop somewhere along the rails adjacent to our site. It really doesn't make sense, you can't stop a commuter rail at our building currently. So, the elevation is too steep to get up and over the bridge and then if you go too far down towards the Bat Yard, you hit a curve and you can't stop a train on a curve and you can't stop a train on an elevation. So, there's very limited space to stop a commuter rail line. So, it doesn't make sense at this point for a commuter rail stop, of course, we're open to that possibility. We've sort of shifted gears and we've been looking at the possibility down the line of Silver Line extension. Silver Line is coming into Chelsea near the Market Basket. So, there is right-of-way there, there's possibilities to carry that, continue that along the tracks back to our site and maybe over the Alfred Street Bridge and into Sullivan Station. So, it would be a pretty neat concept. I, I don't know how close it is, it's probably down the line, but I think you, you should be very excited about the sort of, the excitement within the DOT, within the City of Everett, within the cities of Malden, Medford, Somerville and all, and Chelsea and all the neighboring communities on, on what this area could look like in the next decade or so.
And these, these, these projects we're working on with access from the Orange Line and the Silver Line, we're not limited to these either, I mean, you're also incorporating a water taxi service?
Absolutely.
And this is gonna be operated by your own fleet of boats?
Yeah, it, it's gonna be a full mix. We've committed to take 6% of our patrons and employees by water shuttle. We'll have a three-stop loop, we haven't figured out the docking facility specifically yet, but obviously there'll be one at our site, there'll be one near the Aquarium, North End, Faneuil Hall area and one somewhere near the Seaport Convention Center area. So, we'll have our own shuttles. We've also been talking to several local operators so that we could have additional water taxi access. We've heard, heard some rumors that Uber may be looking into water transportation services as well. So, all options are on the table. We've been talking to a number of different folks. I think there's gonna be a number of different opportunities in Everett, not just our water shuttle at the end of the day.
Great, well, again, thank you for giving us the presentation. It's important the public to understand that as congested as the traffic is down there, steps are being made to alleviate that or mitigate that by, by either the Orange Line, Silver Line, other, other out-of-the-box solutions, water shuttle. We've just, as a city, one of our sub-communities just here recently reviewed and they're updating the livery and the taxi ordinances. Again, keeping in mind, looking at the future, what's, what's gonna be potentially coming. So, I wanna thank you for coming up here, I think it's important for our, our residents to understand that the only way in and out of there is not gonna be by car. There are all sorts of ways to get in there and all of these will help alleviate some of the stress on the, on the roadways.
Absolutely, and I think it's also important to remember and for the residents to remember that we're not a typical eight-to-five business facility. So, our peak hours are later at night on Fridays and Saturday nights. Night particularly, after-work hours is when we're busier. We've also committed to not having employees in shift changes during the rush hour to discourage employee coming and going during rush hour. I think it's beneficial to our employees as well as beneficial to the community as well. So, we're taking all steps necessary to sort of mitigate those impacts. Again, our, our mitigation, we were addressing our mitigation like we were turning over everybody at the peak rush hour periods. So, I think at the end of the day, what you'll see is a significant improvement in these roadway corridors with, without the impact that a lot of people are expecting.
Okay, Mr. Herr, I just have one other question and it's in a little different direction. Will the, will the resort have a entertainment component as does some of our, some of the casinos down in Connecticut? Entertainers, act, special acts, performers on tour? Will you be, will you be complimenting that as well, will there be room for that?
Yeah, so, there'll be all sorts of different entertainment options and actually that's one of Greg's roles is to, to help figure out the programming of all these things. There'll be another number of people hired in the future that will be going into the specifics. We do not have a traditional theater. So, it's not like something that you would see at Las Vegas or perhaps at some of the casinos in Connecticut where you have regularly programmed events, regularly programmed live entertainment. There'll be some live shows, there'll be some live entertainment. A lot of our restaurants are designed to, after sort of the evening dining period, convert to more of a loungy music-type of atmosphere with DJ booths and some other areas where performances can be had in some of the, the restaurant and dining facilities. Our ballroom space, 36,000 square foot ballroom space, it's very big. It'll be the largest ballroom outside of the Convention Center in greater Boston area. So, very flexible space. So, we can, and we have a big event lawn in front of the ballroom out on the peninsula, so that can be tented. So, you can, you could imagine all sorts of seasonal type of Halloween sort of events and Christmas-type of activities and Chinese New Year's-type of activities in addition to traditional live entertainment and concert activities. So, I think people will be excited about the constant change. One of the great things about being in the local market is that we gotta change things up. If you wanna keep attracting people over and over, it's not like you're just going to Las Vegas once a year on a vacation and you wanna see the show again, you know, you want somebody to come down for, you know, a pumpkin festival, to go ice skating, do any of that. So, all these ideas are flying around and I think it'll be pretty exciting for the area.
Say, Council? Councilman Matuski.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Taco, for this information. I'm very excited from what I'm hearing tonight. The Alfred Street Bridge, I know you're designing boats to go underneath the water or?
Yep, they'll, they'll, not underneath the water, those would be submarines. We're not gonna design those, we wanna go under the bridge, under the bridge.
Under the bridge, okay.
But that's a good idea, we could take.
No, I thought that something was submerged, I, I don't know where I got that from, but, so nothing. Your boats will be able to go under the bridge without opening it?
Absolutely, the boats are designed to be low-profile so that they can ride on the water under the bridge without raising the bridge. And it does nobody any good to have that bridge coming up and stopping traffic to, to get one boat through. That doesn't serve the purpose of what we're trying to do is get more pedestrians back and forth by the harbor but be able to keep people moving on the roadways up above.
Well, that makes sense, but the problem I see is a rowboat goes under there and they open it. There's yacht clubs in Somerville and you know they're gonna get more activity with their boats and, and, you know, that's a 10-to-15-minute delay. I don't, I don't know how that works, but I, I can see more boat activity, not, maybe not from the Wynn Casino but from all those yacht clubs that are behind it. There's a couple in Medford.
Yeah.
There's one in Somerville right behind the Assembly Square Mall. I mean, that's a pretty good-sized one, there's one right, right near your office in Medford there.
Yeah.
So, what's your plans on that, are you gonna work with those yacht clubs?
Sure, I've been in touch with them just as I've been going about each city. There's not much coordination that we could do between the different yacht clubs, you're correct. There's two in Medford and there's one in Somerville. They're pretty well-occupied already, I mean, they're, all three of them were at capacity last I talked to them. So, we won't be generating any additional interest in those yacht clubs that they can handle.
No, what I meant by that is that there's gonna be more activity at those yacht clubs, coming and going.
There's nowhere to go, so people wouldn't drive, more people wouldn't be encouraged to come from the harbor under the bridge to those yacht clubs because there really isn't much to do at those specific yacht clubs. Our facilities are not accommodating to a large number of vessels. We have about 20 average-sized vessels that we could accommodate onsite. We're not allowing over. We're not allowing overnight stays. We're not a full-service marina. Again, that was specifically designed to discourage big yachts to come up and open the bridge. I think what you see, even in those yacht clubs, 'cause I spent some time down there trying to watch what type of boats are going in and out, the ones that cause the bridge to go in up are those big sort of fishing trawlers with the towers up above. So, you still have about 12-foot clearance. You can get a fair number of boats. The majority of the boats in those yacht clubs are able to go up and back without any hindrance. The city of Boston has also limited the hours that that bridge can go up and down, so those yachters need to negotiate that properly, so they're prohibited from going up and down during rush hour. That's true today. So, I think you're experiencing some of the off-hour bridge raises and things. So, I don't think that there'll be much that we're doing that's gonna impact that. I don't know if any of the other cities have plans to generate additional boat traffic up, but remember, to even get further up the river, not that it's a real hindrance, but there is the lock system you gotta go through. So, to attract a big number of boaters up there, they'd have to come up under the bridge, go through a series of locks. You're now in freshwater, which that in itself discourages a lot of the larger vessels from going upriver.
So, there is a mechanism that, at certain times, the bridge, I didn't know that.
Yeah. The city of Boston and the Coast Guard have worked out different passage times, and forgive me for not remembering and recalling the specific times, but it's essentially, the rush hour periods are prohibitive, and seasonally as well. So, off-summer periods, you have to, it's actually not even a manned bridge, so you have to book in advance when you want the bridge to come up.
There's nobody in that tower?
There may be now, as we're getting into spring, but over winter and things, they don't, they don't staff it 24/7.
And the, well, thank you for the information on that, but that's something that, you know, right now is a problem, during rush hour and so forth, but you have that under control, so that's good. And you bought the scrap metal company that's on the corner of Broadway and, was it Dexa?
Not at this time.
Oh, you have a miniature, was it Minicella?
Yeah, there's a Minicella Scrapyard on the corner, I believe.
Next to the park.
Yeah, we do not own that.
Do you have intentions of buying that?
I think it's no secret that, you know, we're looking to redevelop some of the parcels across the street. I don't wanna speak to that one particularly. We bought a number of different parcels. I think you've seen some of them have come down. We have some demolition going over there. That serves a couple purposes. First, we have absolutely, and I'm not trying to lie or hide anything, we have no idea what's gonna happen across the street in the long term. Really, what the purchases have been designed to do is to mitigate the parking impacts of our construction workers. So, we need to park over 2,000 construction workers at a shift, and we have absolutely zero spaces, if you can recall some of the overhead shots. I mean, that site is packed. There's no cars that are allowed out there. So, we have no place. You'd have 2,000 vehicles trying to park all over Everett.
Oh, that's a great move. I'm glad you did that, because the parking seems to be under control. But that Cornell building is probably the ugliest building in the city, let alone that area.
In the eye of the beholder, I guess.
Well, I mean, it's built right on the sidewalk. I don't think there's any curb appeal there. There's no trees, there's, it's an ugly building, and that's the first thing you see when you're coming into the city, while you're leaving the city. But I would hope that, you know, it makes sense that you would, and that's a pretty big piece of land, too. They own the whole, there's an area where they park cars, too?
Sure.
That goes along with that?
Yeah, it's adjacent to the park that we're working on with the city. Look, I think at the end of the day, what you can count on is Mr. Wynn is very sensitive, in particular, about the arrival sequences at the resort. So, he really believes that just driving up and approaching the facility is when you're really starting...
It's a matter of time before you come to an agreement.
So, I think you'll see areas, sort of the green areas in Sullivan Square, the green areas at Suites Circle, really being well-taken care of and...
Well, I'm excited about it. And the last question I have, Mr. President, has to do with the recent electricity underground work that's been going on. Is that from the casino? Now, we had EverSource here. They're doing some work at the very beginning of the Rotary, and also on Main Street in front of Councilman Hanlon's house. And I thought that was gonna take two to three weeks. This is going on three months.
Yeah.
Unless I'm wrong here, but...
It's all over tomorrow.
It's all over tomorrow?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a nightmare. But they said two weeks originally, but that has nothing to do with your operation?
Yeah, that, none of the roadway work that you see in and around Everett has anything to do with us. We haven't started yet.
See, people are under the impression that, you know, the Wynn Casino has caused some traffic problems, and it hasn't. Now, what about in front of the Charlton Lofts? They're digging up there, too.
Nothing to do with us. Again, that's all part of the EverSource project, I believe. But again, we haven't started any roadway work, so we haven't caused any disruptions on the streets at this time.
Well, it's good to know. You know, people are telling me that it's part of the casino work. Okay, that's great to know. But I'm very impressed with the efficiency. I did take a ride back at McDonald's the other day. What a beautiful facility you have. It was amazing to see that go up so quickly. And anything I can do to help, let me know.
Thank you. Yeah, and I encourage anyone who's watching to do that. Go behind Costco and Home Depot. To be honest, it's the best place to check out what's going on right now. Now that we're getting some steel and some height up on the buildings, you can really get up and close and see what's happening.
Councilman McGlaughlin, I'm gonna allow Councilman Motuski to read Councilman Seminelli's questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilman Seminelli, I just want to word this correctly. How will you help the city of Everett and its people to keep it in the city of Everett and not the city of Wynn Everett? Can I make that the way you want?
In other words, Councilman Seminelli wants it to be the city of Everett, not the city of Wynn Everett. I think that's what you're getting at.
We would not like to run a city. That's your job. We'd like to run a destination resort. That's our job. We have no intention of going for any of your jobs. You guys are doing a great job, and thank you for that.
Anything else, councilor?
I think that he wants to keep the same old city of Everett, but with a big upgrade.
Absolutely. I think, you know, I'd encourage you to also go back to the mayor's office and his planning team. I know that they have some work underway that we're not involved with, on some of the different planning efforts in City Square, Commercial Triangle, Lower Broadway, along Main Street. So, anyone who's watching, participate in those meetings. That's where you can talk about what the city of Everett means to you, how you'd like to see this city develop, and I think it's exciting times in town.
Also, councilor? Okay. Councilman McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Chairman. And I just want to clarify, Council Motuski just helped him up. Council, the project you're talking about was a nine-week EverSource project. They had a freeze line under the ground from point A to point B. Point A was on Lower Broadway. When you come around the Rotary in front to Charleston Chulaus, point B was in front of Councilman Hanlon's house on Main Street. It was a nine-week project. They're actually at seven weeks right now, so they're two weeks ahead of schedule from what they were hoping to be able to do. They had to have it manned around the clock, because they had to freeze an actual line. It was by federal standard that they had to replace this line. It's the only line that EverSource has that runs in the city of Everett, and they had a federally mandated to replace this line before, I think, July 1st. I think it was before July 1st. So, that was the project that you're speaking about, was an individual project by EverSource.
Thank you for the clarification on that, councilor.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Mr. Taco, how many employees are right now on-site completely?
I think we're about 500.
About 500 employees on-site?
Yeah.
And there's a lot to be said about that, and that's why I asked, because I have not got one complaint or one issue additional traffic, and that's 500 new employees on Lower Broadway, and Lower Broadway has been a disaster for as long as I can remember, and not one complaint regarding the employees that are going there to and from work every day. So, you guys are definitely doing something right in that area, because you haven't impacted that in major ways beyond what has already been done through other avenues. So, I just wanted to clarify how many employees were on the site there. Again, I want to thank you for coming tonight as the, one of the city councils from that area. I appreciate all that you have done in the communication, always available in line of communication to all of us here in the chambers. Thank you.
Councilman Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to touch briefly on the operation of the casino and everything, when it comes to pot. And I know we talked a little bit about food establishments and places where, you know, after you use the food, it might be a little entertainment. I wanted to ask about liquor licenses and how you're going to obtain, and how you're gonna get by the, was it 2:00? 1:00 in Everett, I think, 2:00 in Massachusetts? Can we get, can you get a special? You know, people are gonna arrive at 4:00 in the morning, might wanna have a little, you know, a nightcap or something like that, you know? People will be at the machines, I suppose, 24 hours, and, you know, the girls that come around, put drinks and everything. How can we get around that? How can you serve liquor 24 hours a day, I guess?
Sure, it's a great question. Regarding the liquor licenses, it's not a local license that we need to obtain. Our license comes as part of the gaming establishment, and it's a gaming commission-issued liquor license, as part of the commissioning and licensing process. So, I don't think that we take away from any liquor licenses that were issued to the city. And I think we're also covered, all our facilities are covered under the one license. So, it's not like each one of the facilities needs to be individually licensed as well. The state legislature regarding timing, you know, we're an international destination. We'll be attracting, I think you make a great point, we'll be attracting guests from all over the world. As we travel around the world and as our guests come and visit us, they're getting in at all hours of the night. They wanna come down, like to enjoy a drink before they go to bed. We certainly, as a five-star destination, we wanna accommodate sort of the international standards, and it's reflective of our brand as well. So, the state legislature has considered, as part of its budget, an option for the gaming commission. Again, this is at the gaming commission's discretion, if it were to pass. I think it's got a ways to go, but an option that the liquor time could be extended to 4:00 AM. So, at no point have I heard anybody consider a 24-hour license, although I don't believe we'd be opposed to that either. But right now, the option that's before the state legislature is for a 4:00 AM gaming, and it's a very limited exception. So, it's for the gaming floor only. So, it's not for the different restaurants, bars. If there was a nightclub, it's not for the nightclub, it's not for anything like that. It's for somebody who's been sitting there, playing, maybe a guest of the hotel, that wants to continue playing, and then go back to his room, or somebody coming in on the overnight flight from Asia, get in, play a few hands, go to bed. Again, we're very happy to do so. We're required by state law to be open 24 hours a day, and so, you know, we believe being open 24 hours a day, we'd like to be able to accommodate our guests as appropriate.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
If it's gonna end at 4:00, will it start at 6:00?
I believe it's an 8:00 start. It's an 8:00 start.
Okay. So, you'll be setting down for a small period of time, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, councilors? Actually, seeing, I have one, I'd like him just to repeat. Mr. Taco, if you could just repeat the website that you put up before?
Sure.
Just because we have the viewing audience now, and they may...
Yep, absolutely. Please come visit us at www.winbostonharbor.com. Particularly for careers and jobs, there's a Careers and Vendors tab. So, www.winbostonharbors.com, click Career and Vendors, and then you can get to the construction opportunities and operation opportunities as well. But there's plenty of other information in there. Please go on and enjoy yourself. If you're not currently, join up for some exclusive savings and events. There's a tab there called the Red Card, so please go on, sign up for the Red Card. It's free to join. Greg puts together these great newsletters, they're sort of monthly blasts with exclusive pictures and updates and other exciting news happening at the resort. So, get a chance, all at the same website, winbostonharbor.com, and we hope to see you guys soon. Thank you very much.
And one last thing is, although that, and reason why I put this on was, I could see the need for transparency, and you've been very transparent tonight. The city, actually, whatever questions, there's more questions than Councilman McGlaughlin, Councilman DePiero, and also Councilman Capone would have. You could see that that's here. Although they do a great job with it, we may invite you back again at some point.
Sure.
And I think this was a great opportunity for the whole city to actually hear from you guys tonight.
Sure.